Yes, Mayor.
Okay, please stand and Commissioner Sessno will leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Thank you for the plentiful and bountiful moisture that you have provided for our fields and lawns and other areas. Please watch over us as we conduct our business and the meeting. And please watch over and protect those who are serving to keep the peace, not only in our community but nation and around the world. There it is in your name, we pray. Amen.
Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the May 7th meeting?
Nope, look good.
Okay, well, they'll stand approved as submitted. At this time, we have our public comment session. And basically, this is for anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the commission that's not on the agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to speak? Okay, thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim at May 21st, 2019, as Jake Frochner Day in Garden City.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And is Jake here?
Yeah.
Come on up and the mayor will read that. I was making fun of him because I thought he was the only one who was going to have to read the name.
Okay, I'll read this. Read, "Whereas Jake Frochner has been involved in Boy Scouts since 2007 and has earned the Boy Scout's highest award, the Eagle Scout rank. And whereas Jake, as a Cub Scout, earned the highest award, the Arrow of Light. And whereas Jake continued to advance through Boy Scouts, earning each rank, being voted into the Order of the Arrow and completing the requirements for Eagle Scouts. And whereas Jake earned 34 total merit badges, even though only 21 are required for the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas Jake completed an Eagle Scout service project that consisted of building 15 dog-cat cots and three cat trees for the Finney County Humane Society. And whereas, one in 10 boys who joined scouting achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. And Eagle Scouts are regularly found among the military, business, church, community leadership, and most Eagle Scouts continue to advance the cause of scouting in the communities where they live. Now therefore, I, Dan Fankhazer, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 21st, 2019, as Jake Frochner Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge Jake's accomplishments and express their sincere appreciation for his service in our community. Signed and sealed this 21st day of May, 2019. Dan Fankhazer, Mayor." She needs to sign. There she is. Sign that. It's not official until it works.
One more. One, two, three.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Do you want a picture with the rest of your church or your trimnights?
One, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three.
Get used to it, guys. This will be the rest of your life.
See the rest of you back here, sir.
Jake, congratulations. Mom and dad, excellent. Thanks for supporting him through it.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, items 7A through 7D are staff reports. If you have any questions on those, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
I had a couple on the police report.
Chief, why don't you come up?
Chief?
I love statistics. Not near as much as Commissioner Dick, but somewhat. But I did have a couple of questions because I do pay attention to these numbers and especially the changes. And I noticed there were a couple of things that I was just wondering your take on. One was aggravated assaults were up 113% for the year. And then sex offenses, which seemed categorized differently from sexual exploitation, rape, and domestic battery, were up 633%. And I just was kind of wondering if you could speak to those or changes or differences in how the police were dealing with those issues.
First, on the aggravated assaults, those are crimes that are unfortunately reactive that we respond to. Most of those are domestic violence cases or bar-related incidents. In the bar-related incidents, we try to provide extra patrol and conduct bar checks as time permits. The sex offensive cases, those numbers have been up and down over the years. I think a lot of it has been more awareness that we do in the community. With our, in the last year, the Western Child Advocacy Center opened up. So there's more awareness and education to the public. We're getting more individual reported incidents.
So specifically that sex offenses, does that encompass more like internet crimes and those kind of things, since it's split out from those other crimes?
No, the sex offenses would probably more on the, I believe, more on the juvenile-related crimes.
That leads my second question.
Juvenile-related victims.
And I had a quick question for you. So on those, are they at the time of arrest or at the time of conviction? I was always, I was never sure.
At the time of arrest.
Of arrest, okay.
Of the report, not in arrest.
Oh.
We could have an incident reported in case.
So then that's when it goes on this report?
Yes.
And I did want to ask a little bit about juvenile arrests being up. And I know there's been several high-profile issues with school threats recently. And to speak in general terms, I know you certainly can't speak to specifics, but in general terms, about how those investigations have been handled and kind of what the strategy is going forward with the schools now that we're in the summer break, but what you anticipate coming for next year, given that there's such a concentration of them at the end of the school year this year?
Right. Several prong approach on the schools. After each incident, we had a debrief. My commandant staff had debriefed with the school district officials, evaluating each situation on its own merits to see if there's any indicators that could have been found. I recently came back from Washington DC where I met up with some other chiefs and sheriffs who have some other programs available that I've sent out to staff and I'd be sending to the school district to see if there's some things we can do differently. Maybe reaching out to some of the kids before a crime, for instance, before a crime occurs, where we receive information something is happening, i.e. a child is possibly using drugs, where we partner with the school district, other stakeholders, and reach out to the parents and have a discussion before it becomes a criminal issue.
Would you say, I mean, there's obviously been an increase in responses. But do you think this is increase in actual, this is going back to school threats, increase in school threats, or is it just we're taking any threats more seriously so it comes out more than before?
We always take every threat serious. Even before I was chief and we were handling the school threats, we have a protocol in place and it involves detectives, officers. So as far as why these have become more, we don't know. There's a lot of rumors out there, but I can't speculate.
I would say, and maybe not necessarily the police taking it more seriously, but other citizens that are willing to come forward and say, I heard this and bring it forward, whereas, because there's a lot of like, if you see something, say something, kind of campaigns going around right now.
We have pushed in the last three years, the see something, say something. So that is a possibility. We do have a lot more individuals talking to us, either to the law enforcement or to the school officials when they hear something. And they ultimately say something.
And I appreciate having the resource officers in the schools. And I've talked to several of them, and they do a really great, they're building relationships all the while, protecting the students, and then having to look out for the worst possible situations. So I just, I want to, I appreciate them being in the schools and that continued partnership. And I know that they have extensive training. And so I know that's something that we're continuing, but I really appreciate them being there and protecting us as a community and our kids. It's important.
And thank you for those comments, Commissioner. You're absolutely right. Our SROs are really engaged with the kids, not just on enforcement, but on building relationships.
And I appreciate how these instances were handled because these were incredibly fear-generating, things that happened to our community as a whole. People with kids in school, without kids in school, were all very concerned. I thought it was handled well by the department. I thought that the way that the press was handled and the communication around it helped allay fears. And yet, I do think it's being, you know, handled in a serious manner, taken as a criminal offense. And we would hope to educate the children to realize that this is quite serious what they're doing. I like the strategy that you're taking, and thank you for sharing it with us today.
Well, thank you. And it is a great partnership. We engage with the school district as well as our prosecutor in making sure that these cases are handled appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the staff reports? If not, I'll draw your attention to the meetings of note. In particular, just to make sure everybody's aware, a joint meeting with Finney County is scheduled for June 17th. That's a Monday in the Carol Brown Conference Room over at the County Administrative Center at 11:00 AM.
Matt, you might note that the June 15th legislative coffee has been canceled.
Okay, thank you.
Just had the last one Saturday, so.
Do we have a commission meeting right after that?
Seventeenth?
On the 17th, no. Our commission meeting will be June 18th. This is a, that'll be on a Monday.
So we have the Monday meeting with them, and then we'll have our our commission meeting on the 18th?
Yeah, and we try to alternate with Finney County on when we have the joint meeting in conjunction with our meetings and when we have it. It's kind of their turn to have it on a Monday.
I am attending the June 21st training. Our very own Melinda Fitz is doing it. It's excellent. Me and, oh, they talk about her all the time. Isn't she doing the finance?
I think she did it last year. This, there'll be a new practitioner this year.
She was really, I guess that, my enthusiasm might not be as well. But she did an excellent job, so if you've never been to one of her seminars.
Yeah, so I think it's Don Cobbey and Trey Cocking. So Trey used to be a city manager for the City of Atchison and worked, works for Lee, Kansas Municipalities now. Don Cobbey is a Garden City native and city manager in Osawatomie, I think. I might have the town wrong. Anyway, yeah, need opportunity for him to come back to Garden City and do a training. But Garden City native and out in the city management profession. His history is very strong in the finance and budget area. So anybody interested in the training, contact Seeland. It's excellent for elected officials and staffs as well. So we're trying to get the word out among some of our neighboring communities to come and attend as well. I think we're ready for 9A. This is the appropriation ordinance. And if approved, it would be number 20, ordinance number 2483-2019A.
I make a motion, we approve appropriation ordinance 2483-2019A.
For second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appropriations ordinance, Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance amending code section 30-83 Cemetery Transfer of Titles. Ordinance number, if approved, it would be ordinance number 2833-2019. Andy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We have an ordinance where if somebody wants to transfer a title to another person, it has to come before you and be accepted before that goes into effect. However, if somebody wants to go and purchase a plot from the cemetery, as soon as they fill out the paperwork and pay the fee, it is effective and they're able to use it. There are instances, not very often, but there are some instances where this can be a problem, to transfer a deed to somebody. If, say for instance, you transfer a deed into somebody else's name, you have to give them permission to bury there before if you want to put somebody in that plot. It goes through the commission in order to be, so what we're trying to do is just relieve that burden and that time space there to allow that to transfer without having to be validated by coming through the commission. That makes sense.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2833-2019.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2833-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance authorizing acquisition of additions to an improvement of electric utility distribution system. If approved, this would be ordinance number 2834-2019. Mike?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. What this would be is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition in addition to and improvements to the electric utility distribution system for Garden City and authorizing issuing general obligation bonds for the city to pay the cost of these such improvements. This is all pursuant to Article 12 of the Kansas Constitution and the Charter, ordinance number 31 of the City of Garden City. Little background, the governing body on April 16th approved entering into a memo of understanding, memorandum of understanding, for the purchase, for the purpose of acquiring electric distribution facilities from the Wheaton Electric Cooperative. By approving this ordinance, it will authorize the use of general obligation bonds of the city in an amount not to exceed $16,650,000. That will be authorized to be issued under the Charter, ordinance 31, to pay for the cost of the project and all things necessary related to the project, including the cost of issuance. And temporary notes of the city may be used to pay for a portion of the costs of the project until the general obligation bonds are authorized by this ordinance to be used. So we could use temporary funding to pay it, and then the bonds would pay that particular thing back. That's the purpose of today. I can certainly go through the background on the MOU if you would like more information. Otherwise, that's what it is, the $16,650,000 of that amount. $11,500,000 will go to Wheaton Electric Cooperative. $2,500,000 will go to Sunflower Electric Power Corporation. And $2 million will be used by the City of Garden City for its, the stuff that we need to do.
Mayor? Well, is it paid back by utility rate fees?
Yes, absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor. All of this will be covered by the costs associated with the electric utility. So the electric utility will pay these bond payments, which are estimated to be between roughly about $985,000 a year. Of that $985,000, $535,000 of that charge will come from not having to pay a local access charge to the Wheaton Electric Co-op in the future. And then there's some additional, we're going to pay off some other bonds earlier. So that would make that, it'll be almost a complete wash as far as costs go.
So Mike, when do you anticipate the actual purchase and the transfer of these two substations and everything? Is there an anticipated date after the, if the ordinance is passed? Is there an anticipated date that you're shooting for?
We're currently working on the asset purchase agreement. And Mr. Jim McBay is here from the Wheaton Electric Cooperative. Should you have any questions with him or if he would like to speak, you certainly can. Our intention is to get that worked out, and then in that purchase asset agreement is start setting the timeline. Wheaton needs to build some facilities. Sunflower has to start some stuff. We need to order some stuff. So we'll get to that.
I didn't anticipate this, but thank you for the opportunity. First of all, let me say thank you. But secondly, I want you to know that Wheaton looks forward to working with you to get you access to the bulk transmission system. That's what this really is. And we're looking forward to getting out of your way and getting on with your getting access to that system. Our problem is, is that we do have a little bit of time delay because for us to do that, we're taking a big leap of faith. We're going to have to go out and spend a lot of money to build substations to serve our distribution customers to be able to get that done. And so at the same time, we're building the make-ready work by Sunflower to improving the Garden City North and South subs and getting you new substations that are all yours, we're going to have to go out and build basically three substations. And that's going to take, at the outside, two years. We think we can get it done much sooner than that. I want you to know in good faith, we've already got the land picked. The landowner's saying, yes, we've got contracts already ready to go with the people to come out and build. Literally, I'm looking at them like I'm my operations people saying, can we do this, can we do this, can we do this? And I'm saying, we have to find the APA. So I really think and looking at the APA that we're going to get this worked out and hopefully very soon. But that's all I have, unless you have some questions.
No, thank you for helping us.
You bet. Didn't expect you to do that, Mike. Go ahead. Have a good job.
Mayor, go ahead. Sorry.
I'll make the motion, we approve ordinance 2834-2019.
For a second? Second. Shannon? It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2834-2019 for acquisition and improvements with Wheaton and Garden City. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution for lease purchase financing for Parks Department equipment. If approved, this would be resolution 2813-2019. Andy?
All right. So this is regarding the bucket truck that was in consent that you passed at the last meeting. And so we saw financing from Clayton Holdings and then also Altech, who we are purchasing the bucket truck from. And we got a 3.02% fixed and an estimated percentage rate of 5.71% from Altech. And so Melinda's put this together. And so the difference is $143,900 versus $146,232 over the life of the loan for the lease.
I make a motion, we approve resolution 2813-2019.
For a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2813-2019 to, it's a lease purchase with Clayton Holdings.
So how long will the lease go and then when will we purchase it? Okay, I can't remember. Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks, Andy. Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 2814-2019 and would abate a red Jeep 4x4 at 311 North 3rd Street. Melissa?
Mayor and Commissioners, we bring before you our typical nuisance cases that we presented in class. This is for a Jeep at the property at 311 North 3rd Street. The alternative is before you, you may approve the attached resolution. Governing body may not approve attached resolution. As a fiscal note, the abatement costs incurred by the city will be charged against the lots or parcels of ground on which the motor vehicle nuisance is located. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
And they haven't gotten back to you on sending the note and everything? It's just, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2814-2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2814-2019 in reference to 311 North 3rd Street, a red Jeep 4x4. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, would be resolution number 2815-2019 and would abate a motor vehicle nuisance at 1603 North 11th Street. Melissa?
Mayor and Commissioners, again, we bring before you one of our typical environmental nuisance, or motor vehicle nuisances. This is for the white four-door Cadillac at 1603 North 11th Street. Again, the alternative is before you, you may approve the attached resolution or you may not approve the attached resolution. Fiscal note is that the abatement costs will be charged against the lots or parcels of ground on which the motor vehicle nuisance is located. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution 2815-2019.
Okay, for a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2815-2019 in reference to 1603 North 11th Street. It's a white four-door Cadillac without any wheels. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, ready for item 12A. This will be a review of a section of the city manager's proposed budget. Today's session focuses on the enterprise and support funds. And so Mike Mearhead's going to walk you through those. We'll begin with Fund 67. Mike, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon again. I think everybody has their budget book open. Under 67, this is in the electric utility. This is the Jameson Energy Center reserve account. We put $750,000 a year into this account. Right now, the current balance in there is $3,650,000. Through the 2020 budget, that balance will increase to $5,150,000 with the goal of $10 million at some point down the road. The reason we put that reserve in there is when Jameson Energy Center is paid for, Garden City will be the 100% owner of that, and we'll need money there to make sure that we can keep that facility up and running.
I appreciate you talking about the cost of even repair of one turbine being well over a million dollars. So that was, that was kind of shocking as far as the dollars to repair anything.
Well, but that was covered.
By insurance. I'm just saying if we would have had to cover it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, do, yeah.
So any questions on that? Okay, if not, we'll go to the next section, which is reserves for electric, I'm sorry, cash. Just lost my train of thought. The income statement, I'm sorry. As you can see, the 2019 revised budget, we did make one change in there. And actually, this was pointed out to me yesterday in the, I'm sorry, in the 2020 budget, under sales tax, we have $1,350,000. That should be $1,300,000. And that was, I think, just a simple error.
And the reason for that, Mike, is that you just tie it directly to your projected revenue.
Yes, it is. It's actually the sales tax that's collected on all of the bills that we send out. Then we in turn send that back into the state. So there's the total revenue for the electric utility. The next page is 411 additions for electric. This is where typically a lot of the bigger numbers come from in the electric budget. I'll draw your attention to the very first one, contracted contractors, 523702. We budget $650,000 for that. That's where we hire contractors to do work, whether it be local contractors, Dick Construction, Lee Construction, or if we have to hire outside specialty contractors to come in and do work, we use that particular account right there. Another one, material substations, 64D13. In the 2019, so you know, is $2.1 million. And that's for the completion of the communications tower that will be put in, it's being installed at the Jameson Energy Center right next to the wastewater treatment plant.
Can you explain that?
Sure.
What is that for? That's not just for us.
We... It'll, it will be for the, our AMI system, the automated meter infrastructure system that we use for meter reading. We had to upgrade that system. So it will, it will, it will house that equipment as well as the upgrades we've made to the SCADA system. And then when we get the Jameson Energy Center facility on our SCADA system, we'll use that for communications. Plus, we use it for, it can be used for day to day radio communications for all the city networks. And as part of the emergency management system, we have now, what?
15 radios.
Twenty. Twenty handheld radios that we can use to talk to other state agencies across the state in the event of a major disaster. That tower will be used for that as well.
And I appreciate that contingency plan, especially having the week of, you know, bad weather and there were tornadoes. And so having, knowing that we can communicate in case of emergency. And I appreciate you talking about the police stations there also is separate. So we have lots of ways that we can communicate, not just one, so.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. Mearhead, can I just go back to the contractors?
Yes.
So looking at the 2018 actual, and I'm just guessing, but so do you do the budget based on projected projects? And did we have more in 2018 or is that just an overage? And then how did we make that up out of what?
Typically, we, typically, we do it based upon projected projects. And 2018 is when we had to bring in PAR, P-A-R, electric to come in and replace. They've replaced almost 32 poles that were damaged in some of the high winds we had the winter before. So that was an unexpected expense. We just run it through that particular account. So you can see how much money we spent. The additional funds is drawn out of our cash reserve.
Draw out of the reserve.
Yeah.
Okay.
When we budget, we budget all of the cash with the budget so that in the event of something like that, you could do that. That's same with water and wastewater. Any other questions on that page? Okay, if not, then I guess I should bring to your attention the total expenses for that additions. 2019 budget revised was $4,674,000. And if approved, it would be $2,413,000 in that section of the budget. Then the next section is 412 is production. There are seven employees paid out of this particular budget. There were no additional employees requested. And then our, the benefits costs are there. The biggest item on this page is wholesale electric, 5475.01. You can see that we've budgeted $15,200,000 in the revised 2019 budget. I've reduced that in the 2020 budget by $500,000 to $14,700,000 with the hopes that we will have completed this acquisition and that local access charge that we're currently paying will go away. That's why that's a reduction in that cost.
Is that, I mean, based on what we heard a minute or two ago, is that realistic for 2020?
Yeah, I think so. When we initially start talking, and I.
I was a little surprised to hear two years.
Yeah, it's right. It's probably closer to 14 months, 12, 14 months.
So that has a partial year of local access charges or no?
All of it.
Starting January 2020, no local access is, no local access charges are budgeted.
That's the way, that's correct. That's the way I budget it.
So again, would it be maybe a better way to budget?
Project.
Budget and hope for a windfall than, than budget and pray you don't get a shortfall?
Okay. So you're saying budget 18 months, Matt, or you're saying or budget 20? Or not even.
Maybe 20, 20.
I would say probably change that 14, 7 to 15, 2.
Leave it at 15, 2, and then if it happens, great. And if it doesn't happen, we've got that amount covered. And that's fine. Certainly can do that.
It's the utility fund, so you're moving the budget cash balance into a line item. It's not.
Sure.
A big policy, just probably better budgeting.
Okay. So we'll make that adjustment. And any other questions on that page?
Mike, for folks that, well, I guess, we're pretty far removed from the time when all of our power acquisition was in the wholesale electric line item. Which line items now would we have to add together? Because it isn't just the wholesale electric line item. That used to be in excess of $20 million a year was our bill. And we made this shift to do it differently to save a little, to save some money. But it would be disingenuous to say the difference between 20 some million and 15 million is the savings. What are the, what are the new line items that you have to add together to really show the difference in what it costs now versus what it cost in the previous configuration?
Sure. In 2013, the last complete total charge that we received from the previous was right at $23 million. So in, in what Matt is asking, you would need to add the wholesale electric costs of 15, 2, the long term debt of 4.1 million, and the $200,000 into Jameson. That would be our total power costs associated with that. So about 19, 8 would be the total costs.
Little over $3 million difference, assuming that the bill now would be the same as the bill before.
Correct. Okay, any other questions on that?
First year, it was 4 million, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. You know, we had projected when we made that initial thing that'd be around 2, 2 and 1/2 million, and then it come in at 4 million. A lot of this increase, what has increased is transmission costs. Some of our wholesale power costs that we're paying right now, a couple of those contracts will expire the end of 2022, 2021. And we've already secured lower cost power than what we're currently paying to replace those with. So I'm very confident we'll continue to have that.
Mike, I don't want to labor, but I just labor any longer than we need to. But like the Jameson Energy Plant, so how often is it used? I mean, is it used every day, every month, every week? And so, and then where will it play into our overall bringing down the cost of our, or keeping our costs level? Because it seems like everything else is going up.
Sure. We run the Jameson Energy Center. Currently, we have restrictions on how much power we can draw through some of the Wheatland facilities. That was placed, that was put into place when we transferred from them to KMEA. So the Jameson Energy Center, if our load gets up to certain height, we have to run Jameson Energy Center to reduce that. So we're not pulling through, you know, we would break that contract if we did that. So we run that during the summer when that occurs. More often than not, we run it when the Southwest Power Pool calls on us to run that generator. Whether it's for economics, that that's the cheapest power, one of the cheaper sources of power put into the market or because they need it, it's called voltage support. They just want us to run to have that additional power on the grid. At any time in the system, there has to be 18% higher capacity on the system grid than what's being drawn. So that in the event that something would break, there's still enough power to keep that. I don't have the numbers in front of me exactly, but I believe last year we were compensated just over $200,000 from SPP through KMEA for running that Jameson Energy Center when we needed to. And then, so that's kind of, if that answers your question, Commissioner.
No, I appreciate that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's usually cheaper some, most of the time than buying power, like we used to have extra power. Because that's when it gets expensive.
In the, you know, as long as natural gas prices stay low, that's a good deal. If natural gas prices go high, then our gas prices are locked in. So if all of a sudden, it would be a whole lot cheaper to run Jameson than it would be trying to purchase anything off the market.
Well, those restrictions disappear once we make this.
Yes. In the MOU that you guys agreed to, the commissioners agreed to, we're just, we just, we're going to have a meeting on Thursday. They have to file a document with the Kansas Corporation Commission to remove that restriction. And then we won't have that issue anymore with the Morris Substation. We still have a few other little things here and there to work out, but that's, that's the bigger issue on the restriction. Okay, good questions. Okay, we'll just move to the next one, 413 is distribution. There's 25 positions in this section of the budget. We're not asking any changes to that. You can see, as you look down the line, the expenses are pretty much pretty normal stuff. Repair of transformers, tree trimming, $50,000 a year. That, you know, the snowstorms kind of helped clear some of that up from time to time. But nevertheless, then we follow and do more. So if there's not any questions under that particular section, go to the next page, which is the continuation of that. I do want to bring to your attention material traffic lights, 5530.04. We budgeted $175,000 in there. That's in support of public works should they decide to install a traffic signal at this intersection of Spruce and Fleming. And we have over, traditionally over the years, electric used to pay for all of the traffic lights and maintain them. And that's why that's still in this particular budget. So the total expenses in distribution would be $3,225,100 in 2019, $3,180,150 in the 2020 requested.
When we repair streetlights, does, is that a transfer from this fund as well?
I, no, not direct out of it, but.
You just generally buy them?
Correct.
Avoid it from being a property tax?
Yes.
Yep.
Do you buy roundabouts?
No.
That's not enough money for one of them. That was the $400,000. That's not enough money.
I'm sure Mr. Kern would love it.
There's no property tax on roundabouts.
If we would budget those for you.
I was hoping we could say, well, you're deferring that maintenance line item. That won't even work.
The next section is 414, commercial. The very first item there is transfer office salaries. That's 6% of gross revenues. That's the electric portions of, should we, if the electric department was a standalone company, we would have to pay for our own CEO, we'd have to pay for our, all of that stuff, space, buildings, et cetera. So that's, that is the industry standard on how that is charged back to the, charging utility, then it goes into the general fund.
I asked Mike earlier if he negotiated a lower contract with him.
Yes.
But he hadn't, so.
The other items there, most of it is pretty straight stuff under association dues, just so you know there. That includes the KMU, we have KMU safety training that falls under that. Our normal membership with KMU, the Kansas Municipal Gas Agency, Kansas Municipal Electric Agency, Rocky Mountain Electric League, and the American Public Power Association. So a lot of memberships, but every one of those pay dividends to us. We get training at a much discounted rate and we're, we're kept in the loop as to what's going on industry wise. Down at the bottom, Melinda wanted me to bring up the transfer risk management fund, that's 7051. The reason we don't budget for that in the upcoming year is she waits until the end of next year. And then if there's any insurance claims that we were supposed to pay, then she'll budget that amount when we revise the 2020 budget, so. And then the total expenses for 2020 would be, if approved, be $2,509,500 in that section. Next section, 415 sundry. This is where we pay for a lot of our consulting fees, engineering fees, legal services. You can see those numbers are, you know, $300,000 in consulting fees. That could be anything from electrical specialist consultants to transformer consultants to whatever, whatever the case may be. Another item there is transfer other funds, 7045. This is 5% transfer of gross revenues into the general fund. This is our franchise fee that all the city utilities pay, just like any other utility. Cox and AT&amp;T, Black Hills, that's our portion of that.
Yeah, that's where that reserve, okay, that 750 goes into Jameson.
Yeah, the JEC reserve, 750, that's correct. So the total expenses out of 415 in the 2020 requested would be $4,497,250. The next item is the debt service. And I believe you should have a debt service section in your budget that's probably colored. If you want to look at that, you certainly can. What this is, is we have the AMI debt. That's the automated meter infrastructure system that was purchased back in 2010 or 2011. And then we, there were some other upgrades that was done in 2013. The AMI system bonds will be paid off in 2020. That's about $200,000. And then the other upgrades account, that will be paid off in 2023, and that's about $600,000. So there's $800,000 that will go towards the new debt that we'll be acquiring for the Wheatland facilities plus the $500,000 we will save on the local access charge. So when I was saying earlier that that would cover that cost, that's where that comes from.
That Siemens, is that our upgrade?
The Siemens, that was where we did the.
For LEDs?
Yeah, the LED, the street lighting, and then we did some improvements to some city buildings to make them more energy efficient. We did the air conditioning, heating units down at the housing on Third Street. Remember those?
Oh, Persian.
Yeah, Persian Manor, thank you. So you can see the cash carryover in 2020 is only $974,980. I wanted to bring that to your.
Where's that?
To your point. On the total expenses page on 416 debt service?
Yeah, maybe more concerning, Mike, the trend, the budget coming out, the projected cash balance coming out of 2019, 2.6 million projected cash carryover coming out of 2020, 974. That would point towards needing to adjust either revenues or expenditures next year at the latest. Even though there is $200,000 of debt service coming off, which would help the relationship between revenues and expenditures, kind of what's the.
Long range plan?
Yeah, is there, is that speaking to the need for rate adjustments? Is that, is that, or is that more a budgeting phenomenon like the commission sees in the general fund where you're budgeting in the coming year, fully expending line items that when you get into the budget year and execute it, doesn't happen? And the savings ends up being, or the cash carryover ends up being more in line with the $2 million number and less in line with the $900,000 number?
No, I, it will be closer to the $900,000 number, being such that the biggest item is the $2.1 million we're spending in the 2019 budget.
It's a one time expense?
Yeah, that's a one time, $2 million expense. So hopefully, in the, we complete the 2020 budget, we'll have a better idea of what that cash flow is going to look like at that time. That's what we did there.
Yeah, I looked at the debt, well, the additional information in the budget. And I mean, I would love to, if there could be a pre meeting on, you know, future electric rates or what that looks like. I mean, I would really appreciate, you know, understanding a little bit more what that might look like. Because I know there's been a lot of changes, you know, to, I mean, with the Wheatlands and everything else. And so I would be interested in making sure that we keep our power consistent and also how we're going to make sure and pay for it in the long term, but.
Do you want to go back and talk about, review that too?
Sure.
Just see if there's, I think now's the time for the commission to speak to.
Sure.
Whether or not there's additional work in this area beyond the pre meeting that they want to either have you do in 2019 or have you budget for in 2020.
Okay, I just want to bring up one other thing and then I'll jump right on that is the operating, the goal for operating reserves based upon Melinda's financial thing that she'd like to do would be 8.7 million in cash for the electric utility. So with that, more than happy to discuss the, you know, back in January, we made a presentation to the commission on utility rates 101. Kind of walked through how we set rates, use the cost of service to determine what the rate should be, how we typically go out and look at other utilities from time to time to see if our rates are comparable or, you know, where we at on all of that. And during follow up as that meeting, there were some questions brought up on what we currently pay for demand charges on our wholesale power costs and energy. And in the memo that you guys have, I broke down the, the demand charges that we as the city are charged is $6.2 million per year. And then what we actually charge out to the 501 large customers is $5.9 million per year. So as far as demand goes, we're about $270,000 under what we're currently being charged. So the next time we would. So the next time we would do a cost of service analysis, we would want to look at that and see if that number needs to change up or down, or whatever the case may be. In addition, we went and did the rate comparison against the other utilities. This was an outside firm that we hired to do that. The large general service, this would be the demand rate account. The actual rate is on the one-page attachment one, and that memo shows that Garden City's demand charge, we charge $11.86 per KW. And I know there's a lot of different numbers, sometimes this gets kind of messy, but you look at Wheatlands, their number is, they're $12.86 per KW. Victory has a split rate, they charge less in the winter and more in the summer, $13.83 at the high. Southern Pioneer is the same, they're $12.69 on the high side. Then the KCK, that's Kansas City, Kansas BPU, they're at $12.08. Midwest is $8.38, we're not quite sure how that is, but it is. And then Cimarron was $12.79. Then the next one is the actual energy charge that we charge. We charge 0.69 cents per kilowatt hour all year round, so that number doesn't change. Wheatland Electric charges 0.706 cents, Victory 0.7, Southern Pioneer 0.8, Kansas City BPU is 0.3, but they have a inclining block rate, or declining block rate, so they, it's a different setup, the way they've, they're one of the ones that's been in the news a lot about the rates and the, that's kind of the stuff we got.
Their customer charge is still high, too.
170.
Yeah.
That's huge.
So if, that's just, that's the actual rate. If you want to flip to Attachment 2C, it's kind of hard to read, and I apologize. This is the actual dollars that are paid. I won't read the names of the customer that's on the list, but the very first one on the top, in Garden City, their annual bill is $2,485,000. Wheatland Electric is 2.6 million. Their east rate is 2.8 million, Victory's 2.8 million, Southern Pioneer's 3.3, Kansas City BPU is 2.5, Midwest Energy's 2.2, they'd be 9% less than Garden City. Cimarron is 7% less at 2.3, and then Pratt is at 2.51%.
I get it.
So, yeah.
You made the statement that we're paying a demand charge. I didn't think we were.
It is rolled into our energy costs.
Right.
We used to, and I think maybe Mayor, when we, when we received all of our bills from Wheatland Electric, there was an actual charge of energy, then there was their ECA charge, then they had a demand, they actually broke that demand charge out. The way contracts are negotiated now, it's all put into an energy charge, just we're going to charge you $2 per KW, and then that's what you pay. So we had to go back through to determine, I had KMEA's assistance, we had to go back through and determine how much of that is transmission and how much is energy, that was easy to get that out, so that left that remaining charge of what the demand is. That's where that five, or whatever that number was, 5 million.
I just wondered, if we eliminated demand charge and added it to the cost of power, what would, how much would that go up? Right now, we're at two, or 6. something?
Yeah, 6.9 cents for energy.
Yeah, I just, if you divided the total demand charge by the total kilowatts that we use for the whole city, I just want, I mean, well, commercial, I guess. Residential doesn't charge, you don't charge a demand charge for them.
I don't, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but I can certainly run those numbers.
Yeah, I'd just like to know.
Okay.
If you, what you would have to add to the...
Kilowatt average, right?
Yeah.
The aggregate kilowatt?
If we...
The aggregate energy charge?
Yes. If we rolled that 5.9 million into energy, what would that look like?
Right, so you take, you would take your smoothed out, now there's class by class, and that gets more difficult, but if you smoothed out and said all our energy charges across all classes average out to, what's it average out to? What do we say?
Right now, 0.69.
0.69.
How much would you add to that for a commercial only?
And so that's on this side of the, yeah, we can figure that out.
Yeah, I just... On this attachment one, is there, is there a pricing strategy that you, that you think, I mean, is better than another, or are these just options? I'm just wondering, I'm curious if there's pricing strategies that you think are probably more viable and impact our consumers less, especially knowing, you know, not wanting to impact income?
You know, typically, a utility will go through a cost of service analysis and determine who pays what. So if the residential section is this much, then that's what they should pay. And then they try to get that as close to that cost of service as you can. The governing body or the board of directors, whoever the case may be, can certainly adjust that, however they see fit. Really, the bottom line, though, is if the expenses are here, then you're going to have to have revenue to match that. So you can either take it from Class A, Class B, or Class C, but that number needs to match, or you lower the expenses, one of the two has to occur. So what we, what we do is, just what I said, we go through a cost of service analysis to determine what that number should be, and then we come back and present all that to you.
Well, DFA should be on there, shouldn't it?
Pardon?
DFA.
It wasn't listed.
Maybe upwards of the top, maybe it had been on there a whole year, right?
Probably because it wasn't on there for a full year at that time. I'll double-check on that as well.
Eighteen, yeah. It's not on the list.
Yeah, you can see the, the top users there, the cities, that's the wastewater treatment plant.
Oh, okay.
That's a large consumer of energy and demand. So, you know, we can continue to talk about this now, or if you want me to just gather that data and come back?
Yeah.
Certainly do that.
Get us the numbers, and then we can discuss it.
Okay, very, very well.
Yeah. Okay, where are we now? Where are we?
The next item would be the, for budget, would be Water and Sewer. And the first page is the 000 account. These are all of the revenues associated with water and sewer. Just so you know, we combine both water and wastewater into one budget fund, so that should the funds be needed in one or the other, they're available at that time. Cash carryover in 2019 was 2.4, $2,491,605. It's projected that it'll be $2,179,050 in 2020, if everything was approved in this particular budget. The land lease, I'll bring that to your attention, 3145.01, $15,000. That's the DFA property lease, they had a five-year lease, and then they'll have an option in year 2021 to determine what they want to do there, is to continue to lease or pay that full amount. And the transfers to Water System Maintenance Reserve, that 4010.20, we did not budget that anymore this year, and we're going to try not to budget for it in the future if we can. As far as revenues, it's a transfer from that reserve into our operating expense in an attempt to build those reserves back up. And we'll get into those reserve account balances towards the end of this, but wanted to bring that to your attention. Okay, and then under 311 additions, the land purchase there, 6030 for $50,000, that's the last installment that we make on the Jarmer, where we bought Jarmer's property, where we had the Jarmer water well up there. That's what that's for. And then I do want to bring up Water Meters, 6075.02. We've increased this from $50,000 to $65,000, an additional $15,000 that we would like to use for rebates, if everybody agrees on everything, would be for the installation of smart controllers for water conservation issues. We don't have all the details worked out of how much the rebate would be, but if, you know, if Matt would go buy this $100 controller, maybe perhaps the city would rebate that $25 or a certain percentage, and then we'll be able to track that particular account and see how well those, yeah. So if you guys are okay with that, we'd like to leave that in there.
Well, since 40 to 50% of the water is used for yards, I was surprised, that's a lot better idea than replacing toilets, 6.5 gallon.
Yeah.
I think $15,000 is a small investment to make, where we might get a huge amount of data and be able to support a practice going forward. A lot of other cities do the rebate, so...
Okay, we'll just, great. And the total expenses in that would be $567,000 if approved, so... In the 312 account, there's three positions in this particular section, we're not asking for any additions there. These are mostly just the maintenance items, most of these have stayed the same, these costs are pretty much static across the board. At the end, on 312, we have Materials Manholes, that's for $50,000. That's where we go and redo as many manholes as we can, we don't have an exact number because it depends upon what type of renovation needs to be done, but we go in and clean out the inside of the manhole real good, then we have that lined with an epoxy liner, and it gives that manhole another, oh, 15 to 20 years of useful life.
How about raising, raising the manholes?
Uh...
Anybody ask for that, huh? Yeah. So the level was...
We, some of those...
I seem to hit those going down Spruce Street, they're right in line with...
Those particular ones, I'll pick on some.
Those were on the sidewalks.
Yeah, right.
How much does it work to you, Mayor? How much you want on that?
We did, for a period of time, have a raising program, didn't we? And I don't know if that's discontinued or what.
We do have a program, so we tie it to our street maintenance program, we have the six cycles, so every cycle we go through and raise manholes in that area. So we'll be starting that again. We raised like 19 or 20 last year, and we'll raise probably that or more in the cycle that we're doing, which is in cycle six. And then the next year, we'll be in another cycle, and we're just following that pattern. Eventually, hopefully, we'll get them all corrected.
Thank you. Thanks. I don't know if I'm saying one new equipment, other, that is a replacement of a pickup truck, currently has 76,000 miles on it, and we budgeted $35,000 in 2019, so it's, you guys have already approved that. So the total expenses in that line is $334,650. Next one is 313, the Sewage Plant, same, nine employees there, no new positions being requested. Under, one of the larger items there is 5237.04, Contract Services Biosolids. This is where we, we have several contracts in there, we have ADT Security Contract, we do sludge analysis, stuff that comes out of there. The biggest one is the sewer line maintenance that we have with Mayor Specialty Services out of Goddard. Every year, they come and they camera and clean one-third of the sanitary sewer system, and that makes up about $110,000 of that, 180, so that's what that's for. Any questions on any of the other items?
What's that, repair equipment, 100, oh, okay. Just trucks and that kind of stuff?
I need to make sure, no, that's the, that's the repair of equipment at the plant, so if we have certain motors or pumps or something like that, you know, we budgeted $100,000. Last year, we only spent $59,000, but the year before that, we spent right at $110,000, so that's what that's for. The actual vehicle repairs, Mayor is just below that, 5370.15, and we spend about $10,000 a year on that. So if, to the 2020 budget as requested was approved, that'd be $737,800. The 313 wastewater treatment plant, the, one of the bigger items here is the chemicals, that's basically polymer that we use in the wastewater treatment process, and the office, supplies in office, that's our cost for upgrading to Office 365 for this, for the plant. New Equipment Other, we budgeted $15,000 in 2020, that's for a commercial mower. The wastewater plant employees mow, not just around the plant, they use some different mowers for that, but outside around the property that the city still owns, and some of those, just tall weeds and stuff, so... So if there's no other questions there, the total expenses there would be $1.1,449,150. Then we get into 4, 314 is Production, this is water. Five positions, no new positions requested. The biggest item here is Purchased Water, that's where we purchase our O-treated water from Wheatland Electric, 2 million gallons a day. This covers the monthly fee of the plant costs, as well as the water that we purchase from them, as well as our cost to provide water to them to treat. And that's where that's at, $1.7 million. And then the Electric for Utilities, 5455, that's actually the purchase of electricity from Wheatland Electric to run our water wells out in the Sand Hills, of $350,000 roughly. So any questions on Production? There's one more page that goes with Production in. That shows the chemicals that's used at the plant, or I'm sorry, with the water, that's chlorine and fluoride that's used there. And then under New Equipment Other, for, we're requesting $50,000. This is a four-wheel-drive utility truck, just a utility bed. The current unit has 204,000 miles on it. And the reason there was that difference is this one is a utility bed, and the other one has the crane and all that stuff on it. Shannon, he had asked me yesterday why that was, so... Any questions on that? That brings the total production to $2,721,950 if approved. Distribution, Water 315, nine positions, no new ones being requested. These are pretty much normal expenses here, certainly take a look at them, and if you have any questions on that page. If not, then the next page continues. Most of these costs are with the water tower and our, the water mains and some of those facilities, that's being paid for out of the bonds that we passed last year to get a bunch of that stuff repaired. And then under New Equipment Other for wastewater, for water, is 86,500. That's $11,500 for a bop, for a breaker that can go on the front of a bobcat that can break concrete without having to take a big backhoe down or a trackhoe. And then this is the four-wheel-drive service truck with the crane and the tommy lift, and that's $75,000. Any questions on that? If not, then that total expense would be $983,930. The 316 account, Commercial, this is the Transfer Office Salaries, right at the top, same thing, 6%, just like the other utilities do, this is if the water was a standalone utility, what they, what it would cost to have that, to pay those expenses. And then the rest of this is kind of associated with utility billing. And then the same thing under that Transfer Risk Management Fund, 7054, that will be, Melinda will put that number in if there is one at the end of the budget. So the total expenses in Commercial would be $717,950. Okay, and then we're getting close. 317, the Sundry, is the CCR, in case you're wondering, that's not music that we buy, that's the Consumer Confidence Report.
Fewer people are going to get that joke.
Yeah, I know. They look at me like...
I got Mike, you got it. Maybe Dan.
Then the Transfer Other Funds, 7045, towards the bottom, that's 5% of the gross revenues, and that goes, that's the 5% franchise fee that the water wastewater pays.
So one thing I had, was, I had a question I didn't get a chance to ask earlier, 2018 and 2017, both on the engineering fees, they're pretty substantial. Is there a reason where you're not, are these going to be covered somewhere else, or you're about anticipating any engineering fees?
Yes, very good question. The engineering fees, previously, we had budgeted that... Yes, very good question, the engineering fees, previously, we had budgeted that separately to go with each project.
I see.
When we put the projects and everything in the bond account, we included the engineering fees associated with it, so it's being covered.
So that's why you don't have to budget for those?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, because the the amount in twenty seventeen was so high, and in twenty eighteen, you still had a substantial, all right, I couldn't figure out why there was no, all right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thanks for bringing that up. Any other questions on that? Okay, that would bring the twenty twenty request to six hundred and thirty-seven thousand And then the final is our bond payments, and there again, you can go to your debt service page if you want to look that up, under water and wastewater. Under the, well, I'm sorry, under the cash carryover at the end of the twenty twenty budget would be one point nine, one million nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars, and then that would bring the total expenses approved as presented here would be eleven million five sixty-nine three hundred. Again, the goal would be to have a cash balance of three operating months, which would be two point nine million in cash, which is much less than the electric, but nevertheless, it's there. There's no questions there, then the next item is the wastewater replacement fund, we talked about at the very beginning on revenues, the twenty nineteen budget balance is is two hundred and one thousand dollars, by not taking any money and transferring it out and leaving to get in there, will that budget, that fund account will go up to three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and the goal, both for the wastewater account and the water account, would be three million dollars each. So a ways to go, but we feel that as long as the water fund can support itself, let's put some reserves away in case something happens, we have the cash to take care of that. And then the next page is the water reserve account, currently, there's eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in that account, and then by leaving the two, the three hundred and ten thousand, which is five percent of the total revenues, that bumps that account up to one point one five two million dollars. So halfway there on the water, on that particular one, so making progress. And then the final page is the, we established this water reused utility fund, so that when we're ready to be able to start spending money on the water reuse and taking money out and getting revenues, we'll have the, the budget will be set, but right now, there's no act, there's no activity in that account, so. And I believe, unless you guys have questions, that would be my budget.
Okay, thanks.
And I don't see those debt service sheets, I guess, were they early or am I missing?
Yeah, like in the info tab.
Okay.
Where you like, or you could say, debt info?
Okay, good.
It's all the way.
You can have that one.
No, it's okay, I mean, I just, I just.
It wasn't with your budget, it's separate by itself, it makes it sort of hard to talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Mayor Commissioners, we don't have any other business other than the consent agenda. If you're not wishing to pull any of those items off to discuss individually, the appropriate motion would be to consider items C one through six.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items C one through six.
I second his motion.
Okay, it's been moving and seconding that we approve the consent agenda, items C one through six, any further discussion on that? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. That's what the Humane Society is here for.
That's right, yeah. Thank you for coming out.
It passed.
You guys did a great presentation.
If you'd waited till three, you'd missed it.
Compelling presentation. If you'd like to do your commissioner reports, then after that, we'll maybe go into executive session.
Commissioner Sis. Good pre-meeting, a lot of good information provided this morning, I want to congratulate Jake on his accomplishments and on his day, and just want to remind everybody the pool opens this weekend. I'm done. It may be.
Bring your wet.
Well, until it gets on the awkward ride, until, until it gets on the awkward.
Commissioner Dick.
If it gets warm enough, you know.
I'd like just to add, just that the, how impactful the scouts are, both the boy and the girl scouts to our community, I mean, we see time after time, people that are, I mean, are the whole organization raising kids up from the Cub Scouts and even less than that up to these Eagle Scouts, and it's, it's a great thing that we have for our community, at the same time, it's also, we should recognize the great work that we do, that the school district does, I mean, just finished up graduation, and, and that's probably the biggest investment as a community that we decide to do, is educate our young from kindergarten through the first couple of years of college, and it's, it's a big undertaking for our community, and it's a big investment, but I believe that we do it very well, and we do it probably better than a lot of other places around the state. Thank you.
Commissioner Andrew.
So, great information on the pre-meeting, congratulations, I thought it was very well done, and I really enjoyed hearing about how the housing, a lot of our housing challenges there are, a lot, a multi, a multi-solution approach. Again, congratulations to Jake and to his parents, because I know without parent support, a lot of these running young people everywhere, it doesn't happen. I was really excited to see his troop come and support him, that was a really, that's neat, and that just says a lot about them and then the relationships they build. Also, if you're driving around Garden City, there are so many neat things happening, buildings going up everywhere, and, and I, I think it's really exciting, and finally, we know that there's the coffee shop, people kept asking on the corner of campus and Ameri Street, but I had no idea, but I think it's exciting. Yeah, that's what I heard. But I think it's exciting just seeing all the building going on, and, you know, the things happening with the Sports of the World complex. Congratulations to all the graduates of Garden City High School and also the Community College, I know this is a busy time of the year, and we got the opportunity to attend lots of graduations, which was a blast, and ate too much sugar, no more cake, but I just want to, just the great work that Garden City is doing, so I'm excited.
Commissioner Burns.
I think it's nice to see Chief Shelton here, we're going to miss you later this summer, but congratulations on your retirement again, and I had a train of thought going, I don't know, thank you all for, for stating everything ahead of my.
Yeah.
I guess I won't belabor it, and I've lost my train of thought, so.
How do you think I feel?
I know, maybe it'll come to me here in a minute, but I don't know.
I did, it was your favorite word, yeah.
You said coffee shop, and then I just lost it.
Somebody asked me why that coffee shop was three stories high, and what they do on those buildings is they build the roof, the parapet wall up about six feet, and they put all the air conditioning equipment up there so you can't see it, so, it looks like it's, you know, two stories or three stories high, but it really isn't. So anyway, that was, and we've got another coffee shop coming, so we'll have two drive-throughs. High Plains Development, Housing Development, that's good, Hunter did a good job filling in, appreciate that. I had the pleasure to attend the Haitian Flag Day ceremony down in Stevens Park on Sunday, and they kind of, they have a different clock system than we do, I think, because I got there at eleven o'clock, and by the time I got on the stage, it was left, or it was one o'clock, so, I don't know, I got there a little early. So anyway, it was, the food was good, and appreciated the opportunity to, to welcome those folks to our community. I noticed here, we just got this, maybe you guys are aware of this, but we were approved for the, from the Kansas Wildlife Parks and Tourism, one hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred dollars for the Southeast Park? Do you, do you know that?
Yeah, it's for the walking trail.
Or walking, well, is this the walking trail, or I thought it said southeast, I thought it was the park.
The Southeast Park, right.
Yeah, okay, that's just, that's all this page for is just to walk track around, okay, I've got to sign that, or it was addressed to you, but.
I do think that there are, we read them on.
We'll figure, we have to sign it.
On Kansas looks nice.
We need to.
But anyway, we got that approved, so, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. So the appropriate motion for the executive session would be to enter into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one pertaining to personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations, because if this matter were discussed in an open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed, and the specific purpose being for the evaluation of the city manager.
Okay, your motion to approve that, and who's going to, just the Commissioners?
The six of us, five Commissioners and me.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one pertaining to personal matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations, because if the matter were discussed in an open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed, and the main topic is the evaluation of the city manager.
Thirty minutes, or what do you think?
That'd be fine.
Yeah, we'll take a little break here, let's start at two thirty.
Thirty.
Two thirty and end at three.
Perfect.
Anything you need from me?
Stay close.
Come back over.
And.
So thirty minutes, starting at two thirty.
Starting at three.
Okay. Two thirty.
I mean, two thirty.
You do the second.
Yeah, end experience. All those in favor, second, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Back here at two thirty, okay.
God would like to give you your golf.